I'll call to order the December 11th Regular Business Meeting of City Council. Mr. Hamp, we pledge allegiance.
This is our will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll remind those in attendance tonight, if you wish to speak at citizens' comment or public hearings, there are sign up sheets in the back. The first item of business is consideration of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson is our second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Marks. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries four o. Do any members of City Council have anything they wish to present?
Just to thank staff for organizing, I think, a great day and an event for our city with the Governor's Office on Friday afternoon, with the natural resource damage assessment settlement and that announcement, and look very much forward to the work and the projects that come out of that settlement. So, again, just thanks to staff for all their hard work.
Thank you. Anybody else?
And just to echo what he said, and just again, thank you to the city staff and my peers up here for all the hard work and making those trips to Richmond and making sure we were not left out of that.
Very good job. Thank you. Item four is to conduct a public hearing and consider introducing a ordinance granting a conditional use permit to allow vehicle services, limited use, and vehicle sales, rental, or leasing use at 532 East Main Street, Waynesboro, Virginia, City Tax Map Number forty-six dash one dash sixty-four dash eight A, nine, and ten. The applicant is Fred Powell. Mr. Hamp.
Mayor, on members of council, the first order of business related to this item is the to formally receive and accept the recommendation, report and recommendation from the Planning Commission. They considered this matter at their, looking for my notes here, their November the 21st meeting, and by a vote of seven to zero, recommended that the request be granted. And in this case, they do, however, attach eleven, some eleven different conditions. And rather than read those, I'll reference them here and allow that Mr. Jude Day will elaborate on them. But we do need to vote to receive the report recommendation of Planning Commission.
Is there a motion to receive the report?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Short is our second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Marks. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries four o. Mr. Jude Day.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. The applicant owns a property at 532 East Main Street, which is at the intersection of East Main Street and North Baird Avenue. It's located here in the city. I believe it's the old Owls Taxi. It was also an Avis rental place at one point in its life, and it's hosted a sort of a series of mechanics and detailing operations and other auto-oriented businesses. It's laid out as a garage for auto work. We don't actually allow, at this point, after the new zoning code in 2009, we don't allow any kind of auto-related businesses in this district except by conditional use permit. But there are quite a few that are in there already. It's, he's requesting a conditional use permit for vehicle services limited and for vehicle sales, rental, or leasing. There's no specific tenant at the moment. He just wants to get it so that he's able to advertise the property for the use that the property's most beneficially laid out for. The location is here. This is East Main Street, and this is North Baird Avenue here. As you can see, there's kind of a hodgepodge of uses around here. You've got single-family houses here and here, though this one is currently vacant. You've got other auto businesses, Fitzgerald Tires and All-Season Tires here and another tire place over here. You've got a multifamily house. You've got an industrial warehouse. You've got some other single-family houses, so pretty significant mix of uses right around We don't believe that an auto-oriented use will negatively affect existing property values since this building has already been used as a car detailing shop for a while and a mechanic before that. We believe the layout and the history of the building make auto use and repair its best use at the moment. The condition of the site after the most recent tenants is fairly bad, and we think detracts from the appearance of the corridor. So that's our main concern with the use of this building. Let's see some pictures of the site condition currently. This is the front as you're driving down East Main Street. This is the site condition on the side around the corner. As you can see, it's got a curb cut in front. It's got this concrete in the front area, and then it transitions to gravel. There's a lot of weeds and so forth going on the side. This is the side condition. And then the sign up front. You probably notice if you drive past there, it's currently rusting. And then the rear. And there were a number of inoperable vehicles parked back here before due to the previous Staff recommend, worked with the applicant to come up with conditions for the application. Some of those conditions include a no display area in the front, so you can't put any kind of merchandise or stack tires or used cars up there. A landscaped area at the corner that would be in accordance with what we would require now in our ordinance. Generally, what we do with these conditional use permits is we try to say, would this use be detrimental to the corridor, or is it tolerable in this specific place? And if it is, we think, not detrimental, we try to at least use the CUP as a way to bring up derelict sites like this to a standard that would be comparable to what they'd be required to do if they were to build this building now. So staff originally recommended that they pave this area and put in landscape buffers like they would be required to against other uses. And the applicant has no desire to allow any outdoor storage of inoperable vehicles again. But we did put in a provision that if he did, it could only be done in this area, and it would need to be fenced and screened from view, and then required two street trees as well. The Planning Commission recommended approval by a seven oh vote with the following conditions. They alter, the applicant came and spoke to Planning Commission. They went back and forth about a number of options for the site, and ended up modifying staff's recommendation somewhat. First being that the use shall not include any auto services that generate noise, odor, or light impacts for neighboring properties beyond those reasonably expected for the majority of uses allowed in the LB Business District. This will just allow us, if there's kind of a really atrocious thing going on, we can bring this up. Secondly, no outdoor automobile repair or servicing of vehicles should be allowed on the subject site. You have to do it in the garage. No outdoor display should be allowed in the area along East Main Street, as shown on the sketch plan, trying to minimize the stacking of tires out front in that area. A landscaped area will be required at the northeast corner of the lot, as shown on the sketch plan. So that's this up here. Again, that's what would be expected in the current ordinance. The applicant argued that because that area is concrete at the moment, it would be very expensive for him to break up the concrete. Planning Commission agreed that the condition could be satisfied through planting beds or planting boxes that provided a comparable visual impact. Street trees should be installed along South Baird Avenue in accordance with the city code. That's right here. A landscape buffer shall be installed at the perimeter of the parking along South Baird Avenue. Again, that's this right here. No outdoor automobile repair, servicing of vehicles should be allowed in this, I'm sorry. Outdoor storage should be limited to the rear of the property. That's that area where they used to have the junk cars. And the area between the building and South Baird Avenue, as shown on the sketch plan, should be regraded and the condition of the gravel improved. So Planning Commission opted not to recommend that we require him to pave this, but that he does have to regrade the gravel and clean it up, and the applicant agreed to do that. And then the building facade and garage doors shall be cleaned and painted. As you can see, the current situation is not great. And then the pole signs will be either repainted and reused or taken down, so they'll, that should be cleaned up. And then lastly, from our engineering department, a backflow preventer should be installed according to city engineers' requirements. This is actually something they would have to do anyway, but Planning Commission wanted it to be stated clearly in the CUP. That's the recommendation from Planning Commission. I'm happy to take any questions from council.
I'd asked you about number four in the landscaping, to make sure that it didn't block the view for the people coming off of Baird Avenue, was you gonna check into that to see what type of...
We can, we can work with them to try to make sure that doesn't, that doesn't happen. If it does, so if he does opt for a landscape box, ensure that it's not too high, it's not a, not built up too much.
Anybody else have any question?
Question I have with the landscape box is that we've, so this is nearly identical to a site that's actually just right across the street from City Hall.
Yes.
And at that time, Planning Commission, council at the time, accepted planter boxes as an alternate and for the very same reasons. And it, almost from day one, it didn't work out so great. They were fairly poorly maintained. The relationship between the planters box, the planter boxes, to what you would see in a, in a more permanent installation became complicated for enforcement. So just curious about, about how would we ensure that it's maintained to a finished look?
We do have a requirement that it be maintained, but you're right that it's not the ideal solution for us. I mean, we offer this as an option only because the Planning Commission felt that it was overburdensome to the applicant to require him to break up the concrete. But if you'd like to require him to do that, certainly.
And the staff recommendation was to also pave that area, but the Planning Commission also felt that that would be burdensome, and so waived that staff recommended.
Yeah, and they kind of go together a little bit. If he, if he has to break up the concrete anyway, it starts to make sense to pave the whole thing. You know, on a property like this, that's probably a year, a year and a half worth of his earnings on it. So I mean, that's, it's a significant expense for him to require. But it would be required if you were to build this now, and it is consistent with what we've required of other properties in that area. As you can see, the, you have a situation where you have gravel spilling out into the street, and it looks a lot different. So it's up to, up to council what they...
Thank you. You have a comment?
By our means, I mean profits, not revenue.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing.
Excuse me, sir, there's no one signed up to speak, but if the applicant is here and wishes to make a comment, we, that's our tradition that he may do so.
All right, I'll close the public hearing. Were there any other questions from council? If not, is there a motion to introduce?
I'd like to introduce with an amendment to point four, that a landscaped area is required at the northeast corner of the lot, as shown on the sketch plan, and shall be maintained by the owner, and a strike, the condition of a planter box is an alternate.
All right, let's introduce with that amendment. This ordinance and others introduced this evening will be considered at the January 8th Regular Business Meeting. Item four is to conduct a public hearing and consider introducing an ordinance granting a preliminary subdivision plat to amend a preliminary subdivision plat known as Evershire. Mr. Hamp?
Again, Mr. Mayor, our first order of business is to vote to receive the report and recommendation from the Planning Commission. This matter was heard by the Planning Commission on their November 21st meeting. Again, by a vote of seven to zero, the Planning Commission recommends approval with one condition. The final plats or associated deeds in a form acceptable to the city attorney shall ensure the dedication of the greenway to the city, and such deeds shall be recorded in the City of Waynesboro Circuit Court.
Is there a motion to receive the report and recommendations of the Planning Commission?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries four o. Mr. Jude Day?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Evershire is located up at the intersection of Ivy Street 254 and Hopeman Parkway. You can see a large section of it that's currently built out. Here's where it is in the city. This is a map of what's going on in that area. You heard just a few months ago replating of the Claybrook subdivision, which is immediately adjacent to it. Evershire is located down here, right up against Hopeman Parkway. The original preliminary plat was approved in January of 2005, so it's about, they're almost thirteen years old now. It included 244 single-family lots and 40 townhouse or apartment units. And this was the layout of the original plat. As you can see, it's mostly single-family lots. The townhouses or apartments were plotted to be here, up here against Hopeman Parkway. It was plotted with the original subdivision ordinance to street standards, which included 60-foot rights-of-way and at least a minimum 36-foot curb-to-curb. It also had no, it has about 120, 130 units that are all off of one, one entrance right here onto Evershire Street, which is something we would definitely avoid now. It's not considered to be good practice for emergency management or traffic flow. The proposed plat, in dark gray here, is the area of Evershire that's already been built out. Proposed plat involves a couple of changes. The first is to sections 3B, 3C, and 3D, which is over here, in kind of the west side, the old section. That area has no changes to the layout, no changes to the lots at all. All they want to do is take advantage of the new subdivision ordinance and reduce their street pavement width from 40 to 29 feet, and they'll be tapering that down so that it feels natural. They'll stick with the 60-foot right-of-way, so there'll still be plenty of right-of-way, and it'll be a little easier on the utilities, but they'll go to a tighter pavement profile. And that shouldn't be a problem in that area. Again, it's not as dense because it's in single-family lots, so you'll have still plenty of parking up there. The second part of this deals with the east side. There's a creek that runs down the middle of the property that kind of naturally cuts it into two, and they'd like to replat this entire eastern section to go as, to their maximum development entitlement under this current zoning, which is to put in 184 townhouse lots instead of the single-family lots and the townhomes. So the amendments to section four include a new design layout for the east part of the subdivision. As part of the process, city staff have required them to add additional connections to other parcels nearby so that they don't, hopefully, eventually will not have as many units on just one entrance. The change to all townhomes results in 52 additional units, so this will be a significant increase in density. They're reducing the street pavement width from 40 feet to 29 feet, and reducing the public right-of-way width from 60 feet to 50 feet to take advantage of the new subdivision ordinance. As I said, there's new interparcial connections to the Claybrook subdivision. We've also not required an interparcial connection, but we have required them to reserve right-of-way towards the Boy Scouts of America property. Don't expect any kind of development there in the future, and don't expect to make any connections, so we're having them finish off that cul-de-sac there. But we wanted to have the right-of-way in case that would ever happen down the line. And then also, the greenway master plan shows the greenway connecting through that area, and it's already built through Anna Maria Estates and Claybrook, and comes to the border of Evershire. And so we've required them to put in a greenway easement through the property that'll hopefully connect eventually east to the district home property, and then to Basic Park and to the South River Greenway system. This is their proposed layout. To get the roads in, they've gone with this option, and this is the new connection to Claybrook here. This is the right-of-way that we've reserved to the Boy Scouts of America property, but again, we're having them finish off. We're not having them build that, since there's no, no indication that this property will change or develop any time in the near future. And it does include several cul-de-sacs here. They're trying to avoid regrading this kind of knoll here and making all this area along Hopeman Parkway into common area. So you'll have mostly green space as you're driving down Hope and see the townhomes just across it. They're required to put in a landscape buffer. Because this is a higher density than the Claybrook subdivision, they'll be required to plant this with trees and shrubs all along the border between the two subdivisions. They're gonna have a large stormwater pond in the northwest section. Again, though, under the new regulations, they'll have to handle all of their, all their water quality onsite. I think they'll have to handle all their quantity onsite now, too. So they had to reserve a significant area for stormwater. And then this is the greenway easement that we've required them to put in. And they'll be constructing a short section of it in lieu of sidewalks. In some of those other neighborhoods up there in Anna Maria Estates and Claybrook, the developer constructed the greenway, and that was something that we required in exchange for a sidewalk waiver. Because of the density of this development and the sidewalks in the adjacent area, we just opted to require the sidewalks in this case. The proposed townhouse layout is these kind of sets of six townhouses mostly. They're proposing one-car garages with each townhouse, and there'll be a short driveway connecting up, so you'll have quite a few curb cuts in these sets of six. And they're, I believe, aiming for a three-story product that should be probably three bedrooms each. Again, they're not required to put in detailed plans for any of that, since this is just the subdivision. Parking is the big issue for this, given the density and the narrower street widths. We require two parking spaces for each townhome, and we only count the garage and driveway as one. So they can count, you know, presumably you could park in the driveway and also park another car in the garage, but we assume that most people are gonna park in one or the other, probably not both. So we only allow that to be counted as one space. They'll have to make up the rest with on-street spaces throughout the development, which they're allowed to do under our ordinance. And in order to do that, they've had to add two shared parking alleys and a small shared parking area by the greenway, all of which will be maintained by the homeowners association, which will also have to maintain the other, the common area. Current, in order to do that, they've put, had to put parking on both sides of the street. Now, because this is a 29-foot road section, if you have parking on both sides, that cuts you about seven feet from each side, and you're down to, you know, 15-foot travel lane down the middle, which is not wide enough for two cars to pass each other unless they're small cars and going very slowly. This is a fairly common configuration in quieter residential areas in most cities. It requires single tracking, and what you get is just cars have to pull over or wait when there's two cars coming at each other, or slow down. In some places, this is considered a benefit. It's traffic calming for residential streets. This is a picture of a street in Stanton. It's the same profile that they're proposing, so you can kind of see that you've got cars parked on both sides. You've got a very wide travel, one very wide travel way, so it's easy enough if there's one car, but if two cars come, one would have to pull over. If less parking is, if we find that there's no parking problems out there and less is required, the city will own the streets. We can certainly restrict parking on one side to maintain the two travel lanes. But if it's decided ahead of time that we want to have two travel lanes, then that would, that would impact the development significantly, require a lot more pavement. As far as the staff's recommendation, this is a by right use. They do not, don't require any rezonings or waivers or any kind of special permits. Because of that, we have limited discretion to deny them, as long as they meet the code. The developers worked with staff to meet the minimum standards of the subdivision ordinance so far. Again, we have some leeway in terms of how we interpret those roads and parking spaces, but we've worked with them enough now that we feel like we've come to a situation where we can't make it any better, in our opinion. So because of that, we recommended it, and the Planning Commission heard the subdivision and recommended approval with a seven oh vote with the following condition, which just ensures that they have to dedicate the greenway to the city. Any questions from council?
So if we was, if they develop it like you just showed, and there's just one lane of travel, and we start having problems in congestion, could we go back and limit parking on one side of the street?
Yes. Yeah, we'll own the street so we can limit parking however we want. As a matter of whether, that would create a big parking problem there, so we'll have to...
Well, at that point, though, if we're requiring them to have two parking places and we take away one parking place, where are they gonna park that other car at?
If the parking gets really bad in that area, then probably people will start to tandem park in their driveway and garage, or walk further, I don't know. Staff doesn't feel that that's a huge concern, given what we see in these types of developments. I think it'll be tight, but I think people tend to, tend to manage. But it, if that's a concern of council in terms of you wanting it to be, wanting parking to be easier, then it's, it's fair.
Well, the question I had was, I figured, I already know the answer, but I figured I ask it, is that we, so you all worked with them to, to, it's an either-or of install the greenway, construct the greenway, or do the sidewalks, and then the easement on the, on the greenway. We can't have both.
Yeah. Yeah, the subdivision ordinance only requires the sidewalks. We require developments that are in the path of our greenway master plan to dedicate land to the city for it when they're subdivided, but the ordinance does not require them to actually build the greenway if it's in their path.
Any other questions?
I mean, I guess the parking situation seems a little... troubling.
Yeah, and again, the, you know, the developer presumably has a handle on what his market is after, so they don't feel that this parking arrangement hurts their ability to sell townhomes. But, you know, it's a question of whether, as the city, we think that it harms other residents or creates a long-term drag on the area.
Yeah, I mean, I think, sort of share a little bit, what I'm detecting, if concerned, is that you've got, I get it, the market would support, obviously, that's, that's why they've advanced the request in the way that they have. But at the, at the end of the development, we're, we're left with the parking conditions and then the frustrations that folks may have. But they have the, they have a parking, I think what we've seen in some other subdivisions is that the, while the garage is sort of assumed as a stall, what often happens is that people start storing stuff inside of their garage.
Right.
And then they're parking on the street and the driveway, so they've shifted that one accommodation we thought we were gonna have inside of the unit back onto the public right-of-way. And there's no way that we can enforce, so, you know, force someone to park inside their garage.
Yeah. No, but we, like I said, we only count that as one space. Presumably, if people are storing stuff in their garage, then they're probably parking in their driveway, and so that's that one space there. Like I said, they have had to put in these, by making so much of the parking shared, you do get an evening out if you have one townhouse that has three cars and one only has one. Since most of that parking is shared, a lot of those problems tend to even themselves out a little more nicely. They've had to put in a couple of these shared parking little, we've labeled them parking lots, but they're essentially like parking alleys. And then this little shared parking area down by the greenway, which could presumably be used by members of the public as well if they want to walk on the greenway.
So the alleyway doesn't run behind their unit, kind of?
It does not.
To the side.
Yeah, they were not able to put in alleys behind units based on the space restraints at our ordinance.
But folks will be able to drive through there.
Mm-hmm. Good.
So our hope is that it doesn't become an issue, that people are able to park on both sides of the street, you know?
Yeah, it's, like I said, it's just a trade-off between how fast you want traffic to be able to go through that area. If you look at this as a benefit and say, this is a, you know, a heavy residential area, you want cars going slower anyway, then that's not a bad thing to have parking on both sides, and you're making more efficient use of your pavement, which is why... And you're making more efficient use of your pavement, which is why we changed our subdivision ordinance to begin with, so.
How long, how long are the, the average driveway?
Uh, I want to say they're around 25 feet. We have the applicant here, he can answer that. But it's, it's long enough for a car length. Probably won't hold two cars. Unless they're tiny. Smart, two smart cars.
Majority of people would be driving through there, people that live there, so I would think if it starts to be a problem, it's going to be, they'd want something done.
Yeah. But presumably, they'll also want traffic to be slower, so I don't know. They'll probably want everyone else to drive slower. They'll probably want to go through there very quickly.
So the common areas, are they, are they actually of use to residents?
There'll be green space, so residents could go out and throw a frisbee or something on them, and they'll have to be maintained by the HOA. There's no development of any kind of park or active recreational uses there.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Jude. All right, I'll hereby open the public hearing.
So it's our habit to call on the applicant, and I think Mr. John Reno is representing the applicant, if Mr. Reno would like to make comment.
Hi, I'm John Reno with Countryside Service Company. Yes, we put together this preliminary plot amendment. You know, two things mainly drove it. One, they relocated the gas line, which sort of bisected our property and moved it closer to Hopeman Parkway, which opened up a lot of space. And the second thing that happened was your ordinance change. So we felt like, let's, let's take another crack at this. We like the layout. We have a buyer who's interested in developing all of these townhouse units. They're very happy with it. It's, the width of the roads is not an issue to them. In fact, they're very excited about coming in here and developing. One of the things I also like about this is I was able to prevail to get the greenway easement, and I really, I think it's going to be nice to hook it together with Claybrook and make a loop within our own property. And another thing is, the preliminary plat that was approved basically was houses to the chocks, to every single corner. And we've got about eight acres of open common space now that I think will be very nice. And it sets it back away from Hopeman Parkway, so they'll maintain a nice look to the, to the neighborhood and keep it away from the highway so much. If you have any questions at all, I'll be happy to answer them.
Have you been involved with another development like this that would have this many units in the close, the 29-foot high road in front of it?
Yes. Towns on Imperial up behind our offices that way. Now, there's a difference in the county. We, that's a wider unit, and we have a double-wide driveway so that they can actually park tandem. We had come, come with an idea to put a little bump out so they could park a car and still get out of the garage. But ordinance does not allow for a parking area, I believe it says a parking area between the street and the principal structure. So the driveway to your garage is not considered a parking area, but if you did a bump out, it would be, so.
All right. Anybody else have questions?
This might be more for Luke, too, be about landscaping and vegetation in front of the units. I mean, the exhibit that was included in the packet has, you know, he's flipping to Give sort of an example of, of what the, the facades would look like. And so I would, I would only point out to the example of, of the road network in Stanton. What sort of breaks up the context a little bit are the number of street trees and vegetation out in front, and was just curious about if there was any sort of consideration of including, what's, what's sort of the thought of?
Okay. Yes, we do have street trees in accordance with the ordinance that are going through here, and we've managed to get them, you know, less than 50 feet, actually, just the way it has to work out. But another thing, that, that picture is a little misleading. We are going to be putting our garages together so that we have a common driveway, a common curb cut. So for every two units, we'll have one curb cut to get in.
Okay.
Okay? And then the doors will be outbound, which leaves actually a larger grass area in between the driveways. So it's not driveway grass, driveway grass. It'll be a little more wide.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Ms. Ellen Winter?
Ms. Winters, if you'll give us your name and address, please.
Ellen Winter, 1101 Fairway Drive. I disagree with the proposed parking plan for Evershire. New developments are allowed to have narrower streets, but to allow parking on both sides of the street so only one lane of traffic can pass is like putting in half the street. In the future, the taxpayers will maintain the streets, so in effect, parking places on the street will be maintained by taxpayers instead of the homeowner using the parking space. Is that fair? The picture shown in the presentation on the street parking looks like a parking lot to me. I'm told it's called traffic calming, when you have to wait for traffic to pass since there's only one lane open. I would call it road enraging instead of traffic calming myself. If the city allows them to start out parking on both sides of the street, and then they decide to cut it to only one side of the street, it's too late to get the developer to put in parking so that people have a second parking place close to the home. According to Waynesboro zoning ordinance F14F, any complete parking space located in public right-of-way that immediately abuts a lot of record shall count towards a minimum parking requirement. If parking is allowed on only one side of the street, in order to have two-way free-flowing traffic, can the developer meet the requirement to have a second parking space within 300 feet of the home? At a minimum, I think that two-way free-flowing traffic must be required throughout the subdivision, so at the very most, parking can only occur on one side of the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll hereby close the public hearing. Any other questions or comments from council?
I guess, as, Jude, if you could respond a little bit to Ms. Winter's comments relative to staff's sort of consideration of, are we exchanging the, the ability to get as many units as possible for, I mean, I guess, do you, when considering, did, did you sort of share that same sort of concern about, you know, once we go down this road, and sure, we could go and eliminate parking on one side, but then what sort of future condition do we set up for, for other councils to worry about in the future with, with, you know, where's everybody going to park?
Sure. I, I think there are fair concerns. If, if it's a priority of the council to ensure that there's easy parking everywhere, then, then that's a fair concern. And I think that, you know, it won't be as easy to park here as it would be in, you know, a new low-density subdivision. I, I think from staff's perspective, we just look at the ordinance and say, this does meet the minimum requirement. And that's not our, you know, the ease of finding parking isn't our primary concern. We, we kind of trust the applicant and the developer to know their market and know whether people are that concerned about it. And they feel that having the one garage space in the driveway and then having the shared parking for the rest of it won't limit their ability to sell townhomes at all. So we have to assume that the people that are buying them are probably not concerned about it either. It's definitely still, it just is what happens as the city starts to get denser and you start to move towards a more urban configuration. It'll, it'll be, you'll be parking a, you know, a few hundred more feet from your house probably, if you have multiple cars. But this does at least provide the option for a guaranteed one or two if they want to really work out the details, car to be parked at the off-street, at the unit.
And keep the garage clean.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Comments? All right, thank you, Mr. Jude. Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. We'll move to four C to conduct a public hearing and consider introducing an ordinance to amend the approved planned unit development known as Waynesboro Place at Windy Grove Drive, Waynesboro, Virginia, city tax map numbers 51-20-1-1, 51-20-1-2, 51-20-2-1, 62-8-3-2, and 61-2-3-1. The applicant is Blazer and Associates, agent for Waynesboro Place LLC. Mr. Hamp.
Mayor Allen, members of council, the planning commission considered this application at its November 21, 2017 meeting and voted seven to zero that the application be approved with proffers in accordance with the application.
Thank you. Is there a motion to receive the report and recommendations of the planning commission?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries for o. Mr. Jude.
Thank you, Mayor. The Waynesboro Place is located off Windy Grove Drive down here near exit 94. It's a planned unit development, which is a zone that our code allows for. It's essentially, if, if you think you could come up with a better zone than any of our zones, you can propose your own. And so that's what they've done. They proposed a, it allows you to put together a mixed-use zone with your own set of regulations that hopefully comes up with a better product than would be allowed by one of our zones. This PUD was approved, I believe, in 2010. Is that right, Mr. Shaw?
That sounds correct.
Yeah, 2010. And it included 234-unit apartment complex that would be located at the east end of the development. Included a large retail and shopping, you know, a retail center here, included a movie theater, I believe, and then offices along the north end of Windy Grove Drive here. This was the, the putt as it was approved. These are all office lots up here. This is the proposed retail centers here with, with restaurant pads, and then the apartment unit back here. Proposed 120,000 square feet of retail, again, 234-unit apartment complex, three-to-four-story maximum height. They've got a 75-foot buffer there against the neighborhood. The phasing was that phase one would be the current apartments and then the office blocks, and then phase two would be the commercial. The big issue in that PUD rezoning was traffic. Obviously, traffic is increasing in that area as activity increases down there. They had to go through a traffic impact analysis, which is a very, I mean, it's this thick, a big traffic study. It was costly and took quite a bit of time. And in that traffic study, what they, what it concluded was that they are responsible for a certain amount of traffic being dumped onto that intersection, and so they would have to pay for certain improvements to that intersection. The proffers that they would have to pay for the improvements were grouped into two phases. The phase one proffers gave them the right to develop up to 3,782 average daily trips, the estimated number of trips that would be produced by a certain kind of build-out. And then their phase two proffers would allow them to develop up to 8,500 daily trips. And they completed all their phase one improvements. They built the 234 apartments, which are supposed to generate a little over 1,500 ADT. So they've got about 2,000 ADT worth of headroom on those phase one improvements. The agreement also included a clause requiring a new traffic study if a phase was not completed by 2015. So if they do want to develop beyond this 3,782, do any phase two improvements, they'll actually have to do a new traffic study first. Basically, just saying that after, after five years, you expect the conditions have changed enough that you have to do a new study. This is the I-64 here, Windy Grove Drive and Rossar Avenue, and these were the proffered improvements. The phase one improvements included a widening and stacking lanes here at Windy Grove Drive as well as a right-turn storage lane coming off of Ludewitt. The phase two improvements include a left-turn storage lane off of Rossar, and then an additional right-turn storage lane coming off of I-64 on the ramp there. Again, they completed these phase one improvements. You can see them out there. They did not complete phase two. The proposed amendment today is prompted by the fact that commercial's doing poorly in the area and really across the country. We've seen a decline in, in demand for retail at the moment, and we kind of hear that from all our developers, that as Amazon starts to cut into retail, the retail market's still fairly strong in this area. We haven't seen it really drop off like in some places, but, but there's definitely not a market to be building large, you know, large strip centers anymore. On the other hand, there's been very high demand for the Windy Grove Apartments. They're currently almost fully leased. The 2018 rents range from $930 to $1,260 per month, which is far and away beyond what our other apartment complexes in the city rent for. So they've opted to try to move some, some of that commercial area over to residential so they can build an additional 120 units, so about a 50% increase on what they've got out there right now. They've seen, as they were not expecting, that there's a larger market for older residents in that area, and so they're kind of trying to target that market, but, I mean, none of the, none of the apartments will be age-restricted. But the new apartments they're proposing are a two-story configuration that have larger garages to try to, try to get at that market a little bit more. So here's the approved PUD, and then here's the proposed amendment. So they would take this chunk out of what was formerly Block 2, it was, it was this section where the movie theater was supposed to be, and convert that to additional apartments. And then they'll reserve a little area for, for retail still. And that'll become Block 2, and Block 3 will be expanded. It will tie into the current development, so the new apartments will be part of the Windy Grove complex. They'll be able to use all the same public facilities. They'll have additional parking, since that's an issue that we've had out there. And this is their conceptual mock-up of what they're going for. Probably will look more like this than this, but you'll have the two-story unit and the larger garages. And as I said, they're providing additional parking over what was originally provided due to the parking concerns that we've had in that area. The phasing plan will change. They'll be able to, again, because they have all that headroom with the, the phase one improvements that they did, and they didn't end up building any of the commercial, which is what, what really generates the bulk of those trips. This will actually result in a reduction of overall trips from what was projected based on their original build-out, since you're moving from commercial to residential. Now, whether that's a reduction in reality, I mean, if they don't have the market to build the commercial, then obviously you're still increasing the number of trips given what's out there. But it is a reduction based on their entitlement. They would have been producing more trips. They're also modified the stormwater system. Again, this is not really something that we deal with directly in a subdivision. That's something they'll have to work out at the site plan level. But due to the new state regulations, they have to handle all their water quality and quantity onsite now, and so they've had to tweak that. From staff's perspective, we consider this to be a more beneficial use of the land than, you know, having it remain vacant. The proximity of the interstate exit is a factor, and also the negative outlet outlook in the retail market and the success of the existing Windy Grove Apartments suggested to us that this was a good, a good development or a good change. From my own perspective, I definitely think the location for dense development's not ideal. I would, I would like there to be more dense development closer to the core. However, the redevelopment sites that we have downtown have major cost adderance and are currently not appealing to developers. And I think this site is still connected to the main network of streets and utilities, so I don't consider this to be, what I would want to avoid is a large apartment complex out in the middle of nowhere that we're extending for. And I think this is still, takes advantage of the infrastructure that we already have built. It also supports a major commercial center, and I think could contribute to that area becoming more of an urban center in the future, which is what we need it to be, to be self-sustaining rather than just being another strip that kind of deteriorates over time. And the biggest reason is that I recommended approval is that this fills a current hole in the Waynesboro housing stock. We definitely have significant lack of high-end kind of modernized multifamily units, which is evident from the rents that they are able to charge. Their current apartments are running at a much higher rates than the city's existing multifamily stock, and so I think this could make Waynesboro more competitive for young professionals. I don't know, but that's why we recommended approval. Planning commission discussed it and recommended approval with the attached proffers on a 7-0 vote. And we do have the applicant here to answer questions.
Anybody have any questions, Mr. Jude? All right, thank you, sir. I'll hereby open the public hearing.
So if a representative for the applicant would like to offer a comment?
Good evening, Mayor. Members of council, my name is Ray Brookholder with Balzer and Associates, 1561 Commerce Road. Appreciate Luke's introduction to the project. It's been a while, but back again. So again, we're just trying to respond to the market. So again, we're just trying to respond to the market. There are a couple thoughts and concerns that were raised at Planning Commission. Parking, again, we've actually supplied more parking in this new layout, so we've got about 20% above what the code requires. So what that translates to is about an additional 50 spaces. And again, as Luke pointed out with the prior development, that does not include any of the garages. So that would be yet in addition to the parking lot facility we provided. We've also got a common area there that guests can park in between the two developments. Second question that arose was sidewalks. Luke, if you could, Luke, go back to the layout. We are going to have sidewalks through, within the development itself, so it's, they're all inward-facing, nothing's facing Windy Grove. We did provide provisions. There is one sidewalk along Windy Grove Drive. We've provided connections across at the roundabout and at the intersection of Austin Court. So we're going to have sidewalk connections to that roundabout where that connection exists that'll provide people access to the sidewalk, to cross Windy Grove at a safe location. We've also got street trees planted already on our side of the, or both sides of the street, so that would be a bit in conflict with any additional sidewalks that we were maybe consider. But, yeah, there you go. So, anyway, I think that was, that covers kind of the two main concerns that were raised at Planning Commission. Have to answer any other questions that you all have?
Anybody have any questions? All right, thank you. No one else?
Ms. Ellen Winter.
Yes.
Not trying to.
Yes.
Give us your name and address again, please.
Ellen Winter, 1101 Fairway Drive.
Thank you.
Over the last decade, the city has put an emphasis on sidewalks and making the city Walker-friendly. I think the developers should put a sidewalk on the I-64 side of Windy Grove adjacent to the eight-acre rezoning to make a connection to the existing apartments. Waynesboro has gotten several grants, which were paid for by taxpayers, to put sidewalks in within the last several years. I'm under the impression that the developer is responsible for this infrastructure and new developments. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it, Mr. Hamp?
That's, no more.
No more. I'll hereby close the public hearing. Any additional questions or comments from council members?
Mr. Mayor, I'd, this is a substantial packet to review. And I think, given sort of some of the comments this evening and to afford enough time for a per-review, I would ask that we table an introduction this evening.
All right. Council will agree with that. All right, we'll do that, and we'll.
Thank you.
Bring it up in our next meeting. All right, thank you. Item five is to receive a presentation from Diddwick and Company, Certified Public Accountants, for the city's comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2017. Mr. Shaw.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, David Diddwick is here with his staff, Randy Huffman and Katie Gobble, to provide a presentation of the CAFR for fiscal year 2017. I would remind the council that the purpose of the, or the task of the independent auditor is to provide necessary assurance that the city's financial statements are fairly and accurately presented in conformity with generally accepted accounting practices. And as well, I think that there is some evaluation report on the internal financial controls of the city. Tonight, Diddwick and Company will provide some of the relevant statements and changes in financial position of the city. And I think it's important to note that the CAFR is important certainly to give assurances to the city council, to the taxpayer, to the general public, provides important information for management. And as well, I think it's important information to provide to bond issuers, for instance, folks that, you know, have a stake in our finances. I would note that the auditors are not budget analysts, they're not financial advisors, they're not economists, that they have a fairly constrained task, which I'm glad to say they do well. We'll be back probably in January to have a little more detailed discussion with the council about changes in fund balance and any funds that we have above the, in the unassigned fund balance, above our financial guidelines for maintaining unassigned fund balance as we've done in the past with recommendations for perhaps moving some of those funds to committed reserves. I would like to acknowledge and give special thanks to Diddwick and Company. This year was especially challenging year to produce this CAFR because, as you're well aware, we're midway through the replacement of our financial software, the enterprise resource planning software that we use. And so a portion of our books resided in the legacy system, a portion of our books reside in the new software. And until we make a complete transition to the new software, that will be the case. So it made the task of the auditor this year, I think, perhaps particularly challenging and at some point tedious. But nonetheless, we're complete, and we appreciate it. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Diddwick.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw, for that introduction. And Mayor Allen and members of council, we're pleased to be back with you again this year to present the city's comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2017. If I could ask you to turn to page one of the report, which is actually several pages in. As Mr. Shaw indicated, we are engaged to render an opinion on the financial statements of the city. And on page one, we render that opinion as your independent auditor at the bottom of that page. You, I am pleased to report, received an unmodified opinion. We used to call this a clean opinion, and you were, localities that received this report are certainly vetted well with your bond underwriters and people of that nature. If we could then go to page three, I would also like to point out that your finance department prepared a management discussion and analysis. This is a statement where your finance department presents a summary of the city's financial activities and also presents budget comparisons and other charts and information that can condense, in a condensed format, makes it possible for the reader to get an overall view of the city's finances for the past fiscal year. To get into the numbers, and I know you have a long agenda tonight, we're going to get right to those, and I'm going to ask Katie to take over the presentation from here, and then we'll also have Randy speak in just a moment. Katie?
Good evening. I'd like to start the basic financial statements presentation with the government-wide statements on page four. This is your statement of net position. These statements are presented on the full accrual basis of counting, so this will be your best overall picture of the city's assets and liabilities at June 30th, 2017. These statements also report depreciation, which will not be reported later in fund statements. If you can refer to our slide here, we have a chart showing the differences between fiscal year 17 and 16. Most categories have only slight increases, except your deferred inflows of outflows had a small decrease in fiscal year 17, and this was just due to our required reporting for the VRS pension. If you would turn to page five, we have the breakdown of net position between invested in capital assets and restricted for the different functions of the government. We also have unrestricted net position for the governmental activities. You'll see a negative $5 million. The reason this large negative number is reported here is because the city is responsible for the school board's debt. They're not able to tax and provide revenue to pay those debts, but their assets are reported in the component unit school board column that would be all the way to the right on your financial statements. The overall ending net position of the primary government at June 30th, 2017 was $71.7 million. And if you look at exhibit two on page six, that will give you a detailed breakdown of that change in net position. You can see that there was an overall increase of $3.5 million for the governmental activities. The expenditure, the expenses are broken down by function, and as has been the case in many prior years, the largest expense of the city is education, which includes your annual contribution to the school board as well as some additional amounts that were transferred this year for the high school renovation project and also a transfer of prior-year surplus amounts. I do want to note that the overall change in net position of $3.3 million is not a change in cash. That does not mean the city had a $3.3 million increase in cash. About $1 million of this amount includes debt that was paid off during fiscal year 17, so that's also going to increase your net position. If we could move on to the fund statements on pages seven and eight, this is the balance sheet for the governmental funds. These statements are the modified accrual basis of accounting, and they just, they focus on the near-term financing. So your capital assets and your long-term liabilities are not reported here. The major funds for fiscal year 17 was the General Fund and the self-funded health insurance fund. Those are reported separately, and all other governmental funds are included in your third The ending unassigned fund balance for the General Fund is $9.3 million, which is actually a $1.7 million decrease from the prior year. And, actually, if we can turn to page 10, I'm going to jump there because that will explain why you had such a large decrease. The General Fund had a $2.2 million change in fund balance. And if we can look at the slide to compare, yeah, fiscal year 17 and 16, your revenues increased $1.2 million from 16, but your expenditures increased $4.3 million. So that makes up some of your overall decrease for the General Fund. Some of the expenditures that increased this year included the public works had a $1.1 million increase. A lot of that had to do with a reappropriation of street maintenance funds, and also the education expenditures increased $2.2 million for the items that I spoke about earlier. The overall change for the governmental funds was a negative .5 million. To end, your ending fund balance for the governmental funds was $20.3 million. On page 12, we have a budget-to-actual comparison for the General Fund. You can see in the final budget column that originally the city had planned for a $4.9 million use of fund balance during fiscal year 17, but the revenues had a $1 million favorable variance, and expenditures were actually 1.7 less than budgeted. So your overall use of fund balance ended up being the $2.2 million rather than the On pages 13 to 14, we have the statement of net position for the proprietary funds. These are your business-type activities, mainly the water and sewer fund. Most of the amounts reported on this statement are fairly consistent with prior years. Your total liabilities decreased .6 million, and that was just due to current debt curtailment in fiscal year 17. On page 15, we have the statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in fund net position. Overall, your operating revenues increased .6 million, and this was due to increases in the charges for services in the water and sewer funds, which are both major funds and required to be reported in separate columns here as well. I'm going to go ahead and jump to page 19. This starts the notes to the financial statements. These provide all the required disclosures and also provide more detailed information for the statements we just spoke about. I'm not going to go into detail of any of these, but I do want to point out note seven is your capital assets, and note number nine is the details to the long-term debt, and note 13 is pretty lengthy, and that describes the defined benefit plan, the VRS pension. And then on pages 62 to 65 is where we have to present our required supplemental information for the VRS pension and also the other post-employment benefits. After page 65, we get into the combining statements. I'm not going to go into detail of those, but it provides information of individual funds. All of that information flows through to the statements we just spoke about. And I will let Randy speak about the compliance section.
Mayor, member of council, you'll notice on page 124 and 125, this is our report on the internal controls over financial reporting required by government auditing standards. This report identified two material weaknesses that will be discussed in the scheduled findings and question cost later in the presentation. On pages 126 and 127 is our report on each major program required by the Uniform Guidance. We issued an unmodified report as the city and school board complied with the compliance requirements that could have a direct and material effect on each of the city and school board's major programs tested during the current year. On pages 128 and 129 is our schedule of findings and question cost. Item 1G lists the federal programs that were tested as major during the current year. The Uniform Guidance Thresholds for Type A and Type B Programs is $750,000, as noted in item 1H. Item 2 notes the findings related to the financial statement audits. Finding 08-1 is a repeated material weakness due to material adjustments being necessary to the city and school board's records to be in compliance with generally accepted accounting principles, required disclosure, supplemental information, and also under item 08-1 is management's response. Finding 17-1 was the new finding during the current audit. An employee was allowed to circumvent the workflow process in order to pay bills timely. This allowed the employee to disperse funds with no approval. Management has addressed this issue and implemented two changes. And you can see these changes in the city's response section to the finding to prevent unapproved dispersments of funds in the future. It is important to note here that this was a procedural finding and that there were no misuse of funds noted during the testing. On pages 133, or excuse me, on page 130 to 133 is the city's schedule of findings, or excuse me, schedule of expenditures of federal awards. This lists each federal granting agency and the amount of federal expenditures for each program. On page 135 is our report on state and local compliance matters. I will now turn it over to David for closing remarks.
Thank you, Katie and Randy. I also want to give credit to my staff because, as Mr. Shaw pointed out, this was a challenging audit because of the two different places that we had to find the information. That problem was really unavoidable when you have this type of change, but it was to the city's advantage that we had experience with the old system and had a lot of base knowledge about the city itself. Are there any questions you may have?
Any questions? Sounds like it's a pretty thorough report.
Thank you very much. And I do want to thank the city staff, the city manager's office, the finance department. I want to thank also Dr. Castle and his staff at the school board and everyone during this very difficult financial accounting system change. And everyone during this very difficult financial accounting system change was cooperative, pleasant to work with. And I think all of the findings that we pointed out today were just the process of learning the new system. There was nothing malicious about it. And it'll be learning experience as the rest of the system is implemented. So we want to thank all of you and wish you a very pleasant holiday.
Thank you. Maybe next year it'll be a whole lot smoother.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to Item 6. Presentation of the Stormwater Program and Annual Report by Trafford McRae, Stormwater Program Manager. Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Mayor, we've heard from Trafford now, I'm thinking this is our fourth year, going on five years of MS4 compliance, believe it or not. That as you're well aware, in 2013, we were designated as an MS4 community by the federal government, which required us to seek a permit for the discharge of water from our stormwater system. And that permit requires that we abide by a number of minimum pollution control measures. And Mr. McRae has been the Stormwater Program Manager throughout this entire period. Very knowledgeable. We're lucky to have him. And we'll give you a report of our most recent activities and then looking forward to the next year. I would like to acknowledge while Mr. McRae's here, we started the meeting with some acknowledgement of staff efforts relative to the NERDA settlement. And Mr. McRae is one of the staff who's been key and instrumental in providing expertise and time, really for a number of years in our discussions and negotiations with the trustees of the NERDA settlement. And it's good to have him here as timely. So with that, I'll give it to Mr. McRae.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw and Mayor Allen and members of council. It's good to be here. I won't dig too, too much more into the MS4 designation, only just to note that we're in Year 5 and it's a five-year cycle. So we're closing out one, one cycle and moving into the next permit cycle at the end of this fiscal year. One of the big things we've tried to do through this first permit cycle is just help citizens understand what, what stormwater is. And it's that basic idea with urban runoff is you increase impervious area. So rooftops, parking lots, roadways, less water goes into the ground, less water goes back up into the atmosphere. So you can have flooding and also water pollution problems as a result. Another thing we've really focused on is just trying to define what that system is and how many miles of storm sewer and ditches and how many structures we have. And the, the big number here is the 150 regulated outfalls. As you all may recall, if we're audited by DEQ, what they want to see is to make sure that we're looking at those outfalls regularly, that we're checking for non-stormwater discharges such as sewage, gasoline, anything like that. And that, that we have a process to inspect those outfalls and follow up if we find non-stormwater in, in our storm sewer system. In 2013, we, we, we came up with this graphic to show the different parts of the stormwater program. So administration and regulatory compliance, capital improvements, maintenance, TMDLs. In this first permit cycle, we've really been heavily focused on administration and regulatory compliance, building a program, so coming up with different plans to address different parts of the MS4 program. And moving forward, we, we really want to shift our focus more towards maintenance. What's, what's often been a very reactionary process in the city is moving toward a more proactive maintenance program. And I wanted to take this time also to, to acknowledge council's willingness to help us with the purchase of a new pickup truck. That's actually going to make a big difference because we'll be able to move more than two, two crew members to and from job sites. We'll be able to move more material. So that, that's a big help as far as actually moving forward with, with building our maintenance program. I'm going to dive just a little bit deeper into what we've actually been doing in Years 4 and 5 to, to meet some of the minimum control measure requirements. With education and outreach, one of our big, big focuses has been on school presentations. My staff's done a great job coming up with a program to, to reach out. We've actually been to all the 4th grade classes now. We've got a program that's tailored toward their SOL. So getting them just some base knowledge about what our water sheds and what is, is stormwater pollution. We also had booths at the Fall Foliage Festival and at River Fest. Illicit discharge monitoring, detention pond inspections. We started a program to make sure that we're getting responses from people that have maintenance agreements. So they have legal requirements to do annual inspections of their facilities. And we also partnered with the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation and Timmons Group, one of our consulting engineers, to develop concept plans for Constitution Park that'll be the basis for the, a lot of the water quality components of the South River Preserve Plan. Other Year 4 activities included a contract to clean one mile storm sewer, full-time street sweeping, storm sewer replacement projects, and then pollution prevention and nutrient management plans. The, the street sweeping is, is very important. It's a big component of our regulatory compliance. It's a good way to get pollution off the streets before it gets into the storm sewers. And it also meets some other community-wide objectives, just as far as aesthetics and cleanliness. We're also really hitting our stride with storm sewer replacement projects. We've kind of figured in the right size project for our guys to do in-house. And they, they knocked several projects out last year and we're looking forward to doing more in that regard. Some of our Year 5 focal points are going to still be on detention ponds. That's a, a part of the MS4 program that, that's also a focus for, for DEQ. So maintaining city-owned facilities and then also increased inspections of, of private facilities. And what we're going to, we're going to propose reclassifying existing staff to take on that extra workload rather than adding staff to do, to do those inspections. And we've also been doing pollution prevention inspections at high, high priority facilities. And we found some good low-cost ways to, to meet some of our requirements. The, the picture here at the bottom is that, that's a filter that was installed in a, in a stormwater inlet to take out sediment, oils, grease, things like that. We are looking at FY 19 and 20 having to do some structural practices at the Public Works Operations Facility. But we're trying to find some good low-cost ways to meet some of our requirements as well. Some of our other Year 5 focal points, we have to submit a registration statement to renew permit coverage. So updating our program plan and trying to be cost-effective, leveraging existing activities. A lot of that is working with other city departments such as Parks and Recreation. The, the Fire Department and EOC have been great partners in building this program. And also our, our maintenance program, vegetation management and then, and then pipe and ditch upgrades. We're going to propose a, a purchase with, in partnership with the Streets Division of a new, a new tractor with, with mowing attachments in the spring of calendar year 2018. And that's important for maintaining detention ponds and also keeping drainage ditches open and flowing. One other piece of our MS4 program is the, is the Chesapeake Bay TMDL Special Condition. And I know you all have heard about this before, but it's basically just a, it's a pollution diet that's managed through NPDES, our MS4 program. And the registration statement that we have to submit requires this action plan for TMDL compliance. And as we've been building it, one of our big focal points has been mapping to minimize, so really trying to reduce the amount of regulated area that we're required to address pollution from. There is a public comment period and a public hearing required. So you all will be hearing more about that in the spring. This, this is an important slide. I feel like it shows that we've, we've done really well with our Bay TMDL progress to date. We're actually ahead of all of our 2023 goals and we're within striking distance of 2028 goals with phosphorus and sediment. That's due in large part to the Jefferson Park constructed wetland, which has received regional and national awards and, and treats a large drainage area. So moving forward, we're going to have to focus on maintaining that facility. However, the other piece of this is, is from this full-time street sweeping program. And so it, it may be that the most cost-effective measure as we, we study it more is to increase our street sweeping program by adding to that fleet. One other part of the stormwater program is capital improvements. That's a running list of about 30 projects that are focused on number of properties affected, types of flooding, whether it affects emergency services. We've completed six projects since 2009 and we have two in preliminary design. The one closest to, to being ready to go is the replacement of the A Street Culvert over Steel's Run, which we have at about 30% design and we've applied for VDOT revenue sharing funds for. And this is that facility in May of 2017 when it overtopped. And then that's just looking at it from the downstream side. Also wanted to give you all just a brief update on, on where we stand with the stormwater utility. As you all know, in 2015, council adopted this stormwater utility fee, which provides secure funding for the program and very much appreciate that. Our annual revenue is about 1.1 million. We've had an outstanding collection rate of over 99%. This graphic also shows on the, on the left is the non-single-family revenue versus the single-family revenue. So our non-single-family revenue is about three quarters of our overall revenue. These next three slides are just a, a high-level breakdown of where the, the stormwater funds go to. As you can see from this slide, initially, we had a lot of money going into the administrative side to pay for developing those plans of how we were actually going to implement the program. As we move forward in, in FY 18, more of the money is going toward the maintenance side. And we're trying to, we're administratively, we're at a point where we're, we're maintaining regulatory compliance. We've also started to partner with the other revenue funds to, to fund the Miss Utility Program. So that's transfers to the Water Fund and we're also able to build a pretty good base of retained earnings. This is fiscal year '22, which shows that same projected spending on the maintenance side of things. The reason I picked fiscal year '22 is that's when we'll start operating in the red with just some minimal projected increases in, in some of our costs. And so there would not be any extra, any extra padding for adding a flush truck crew or additional street sweeper or any other operational capacity. So in, in closing, I just wanted to say thank you all for supporting the program as we're forced to grow very quickly. We appreciate you all being flexible with providing us the tools and, and the equipment that are needed to do our job. And also just, you know, why is the stormwater program important? There's, there's maintaining regulatory compliance, working to improve our drainage infrastructure, and then also having a, a clean river and streams that the community can enjoy.
Any questions? How many street sweepers do we have currently operating?
We have, we have one sweeper that we run full-time and it's a, it's a newer technology that picks up more especially fine grits than, than we had previously. We kept one in reserve that we mostly use just for, during leaf season to, to go behind crews and do, do some things like that.
When we first started talking about this MS4, we were, at least I was confused and worried because they were talking about how complicated it was going to be and how costly it was going to be to us. And I think we were told that each year it seemed like we would get more mandates and more restrictions and requirements that we'd have to fulfill. It sounds like to your report, we're keeping up with it pretty good.
I, I think, I think we are. We have been very fortunate on the, the TMDL side of things to have a couple, have the one large project that netted significant pollution reductions. And we're, you know, taking advantage of the street sweeping credits as it stands now. So.
The award-winning TMDL project.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Trafford.
Item 7 is to appoint years to consider the request by G. William Watkins, Representative for Dr. Kenneth Bowman, to close and vacate unimproved alleys and streets at the end of May Avenue. Mr. Ham.
So Mayor Allen and members of council, I'm sending down a revised viewers list. And you're asked this evening to appoint three viewers, one alternate, and designating one of the three primary viewers as a chair. If you can assemble the names and do that by motion, it would be appreciated.
Anybody have somebody they'd like to pick off the start? So we need three, correct?
Yes, sir, plus an alternate.
I'll like to nominate Mr. Greg Bruno as Chair, Ms. Ellen Winter, and Ms. Doris Holby.
It's three recommendations. Everybody else good with that? No good with that? Okay. All right, then there's a motion to appoint Mr. Bruno, Ms. Holby, and Ms. Winters, with Mr. Bruno being the chairperson. And we need an alternate, correct?
Correct.
Anybody want to pick an alternate?
Robert Browning.
All right, Mr. Browning, your alternate. All right, is there a motion to make that appointment?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries 4-0. Thank you. Item 8A is to consider introducing an ordinance adjusting the compensation of City Council of Waynesboro. Mr. Ham.
The council will recall that you attest the city manager with presenting a recommendation concerning compensation for the elected body with primary objective of increasing the equity among members of, for compensation for your service in this capacity, acknowledging that not all members who are elected to the body elect to accept coverage under the group health insurance plan for which you're eligible as council members. The secondary objective being with, in developing a recommendation to improve equity, to be mindful of expense to the organization. My recommendation and presented in the form of an ordinance for your consideration for introduction this evening is that you increase the mayor's annual compensation to $10,020. Council members would be compensated annually $9,100 or $9,100. And that council members would no longer be eligible to participate in the city's group health insurance plan. These changes would take effect July 1 of 2018. And I think it was, it's worth noting that in 2016, staff conducted an informal assessment or survey of compensation for elected bodies in the Shenandoah Valley, ranging from Rockbridge County to the south, to Rockingham County to the north, and all the independent cities located in Augusta, Rockbridge, and Rockingham. So there were seven localities or elected bodies that were surveyed. At the time, Waynesboro's position was the sixth lowest of those seven bodies that were surveyed. Even with this adjustment, you will improve your position or raise your position by only one slot. And so you'll be the, now the fifth lowest or fifth among those bodies surveyed. And I would qualify that by saying I'm not, that was as of 2016. It may or may not remain the case if either of, any of those bodies have made changes. So all that to say is, I think the recommendation certainly improves equity. I think it certainly saves the organization money, not only in terms of premium contribution, as I explained in a previous meeting, but also in terms of actual claim utilization applied or originating from the council. And it doesn't change substantially your position relative to other locale, excuse me, other... And it doesn't change substantially your position relative to other local elected bodies in the valley. And so I think that still reflects the commitment and the example that the council has lived into over the years in terms of being fiscally responsible and appropriate in terms of compensation, especially your own. If you have other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Just one comment that I think, you know, we first talked about that there was an amount maybe of like $30,000 savings that we hope to foresee.
That's correct.
To the city because of this.
That's correct. And that originates primarily in claims utilization. There's savings through the premium avoidance, but there's also significant savings through the utilization avoidance. Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Anybody else have any questions? If not, is there a motion to introduce?
Some moved.
Thank you, Mr. Marks. Item nine A is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating $19,075 of insurance proceeds to the general fund for transfer to the facility maintenance reserve for the final payout of the roof damage claim for the fire department. Mr. Hamp.
So the council may recall that in the spring of this year, we experienced significant damage to the roof at the fire department. And our organization fronted the money for the repair, realizing that subsequent to the approved repair by the insurance company, we would be reimbursed for that. This appropriation represents that insurance reimbursement, and we're simply putting it back in the reserve fund from which we took the money to make the repair.
Yes, sir. Are there any questions? If not, is there a motion to introduce?
Some moved.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Item nine B is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating a portion of school renovation committed reserves in the amount of $750,000 for transfer to the school funds to be used for architect and engineering services for Waynesboro High School renovation project. Mr. Hamp.
These are funds that originate from the marginal increase in the tax, the real estate tax that the council adopted. So this is resulting from the new revenue generated by that increase specifically for the project. Dr. Castle makes this request on behalf of the school system, and it is believed that this appropriation gets us through the balance of this fiscal year. And just as a reminder, we are aiming for borrowing in the spring and bidding immediately following the borrowing. So this should get us to June 30 of 2018, architectural and engineering, and maybe some small items related to the project as well.
Are there any questions? Unusual that Dr. Castle is so quiet, like we're having a meeting. Is there a motion to introduce?
Some moved.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Number 10 is communications and correspondence.
I have one item this evening at the request of our Board for Disability and Aging Independent Living. They reminded me or asked me, I'm struggling this evening with my pronunciation, asked me to remind the community that as a regular program, Augusta Health offers monthly a Lunch and Learn series in which they address various health-related topics in the community and for the benefit of the residents in the region. Their next installment in that program is December 20. And the Disability and Aging Board for Independence note that if there are any developments related to the Augusta Health and Anthem negotiation, they're likely to be addressed at this presentation. And that presentation is going to be offered by Mary Manix, the president and CEO of Augusta Health. So just a reminder, December 20, 12 to 1, and they do ask, Augusta Health does ask that you make a reservation if you'd like to attend.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Item 11 is citizens' comment period.
Mr. George Reed.
He's left.
Looks like he's departed. Ms. Linda Rivas.
If you'll give us your name and address, please.
My name is Linda Rivas. My address is 1112 Esteline Valley Road in Craigsville. And I'd like to share with you something that happened today. It's something that is very saddening. It's also something that I'm very ashamed about. I'm working on a project with the Department of Corrections, and I had to drop some paperwork off in the office in Stanton. When I went in, these two gentlemen that had been in a car, had been following me just, you know, on the road. Anyway, they turned into the same parking lot that I did. Now, I'm liberal. I have bumper stickers on my car, which indicate that. And for probably ten miles, these guys had been following and pointing at the bumper stickers and laughing. After they got out of the car, I recognized one as being from the area that I'm in. And he's, I can't say for sure that he's a known official member of the KKK, but he is known to hate anybody who's not white. I went into the reception area of the Department of Corrections. There was a black gentleman sitting in there, a white gentleman, and then these two guys that were in the car behind me came in. The white gentleman looks at one of the guys that came in and said, wow, it's good to see you. I haven't seen you in a Coon's age. The black gentleman who was sitting there, you could just see by the look on his face, you know, it just, it told a story. It said, it's like, I've been here before. And just that hurt that was on his face. I started to speak up. And this is where I want to apologize to my friends of color, because I failed at being an ally. But because this one person who had come in and was interacting with a guy that was already there is a known person in our community who commits a lot of crimes, who's frequently in and out of the penal system, who frequently commits acts against citizens' properties out where I live, I froze. I couldn't defend the poor man that was sitting there being denigrated. And we just have to do something, something, community meetings, something, education. If the city of Waynesboro needs help with this, I'm a member of, excuse me, facilitation network out of JMU and part of the Peace Building from EMU. So I'm just saying, you know, what I witnessed today is not out of the norm. I bet every person who's white in this room has been complicit in letting people get away with racist remarks like that. And I have no excuse for doing that. The time has come. Well, yes, we have to think about our personal safety, but my friends of color have been worried about their personal safety for all these years. This is the first time in my life that I've felt afraid to stand up for somebody. And I'm really ashamed that I didn't do the right thing. And I'm going to go out tomorrow and I'm going to try to do better. And I encourage everybody in this room to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. The city manager requests a closed session. Is there a motion for that?
Mr. Mayor, I move this meeting be recessed and the City Council of Waynesboro immediately reconvene in a closed meeting for the following purposes. Discussion concerning a prospective business or industry or the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business's or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community as permitted by Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A5, namely, a business which has indicated an interest in relocating to the city or expanding its operations within the city.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Ms. Portal?
Mayor Allen?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Short?
Aye.
Councilman Marks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Anderson?
Aye.
We are in closed session.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the following resolution. Whereas the City Council of Waynesboro has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires certification by the City Council that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of Waynesboro hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and two, only such business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the City Council of Waynesboro.
Is our second.
Mr. Portal.
Mayor Allen.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Short.
Aye.
Councilman Marks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Anderson.
Aye.
We're in open session again. And is our motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We are adjourned.